And we'll call meeting to order. We'll call please.
Karen.
Doug.
Karen.
Karen.
Eric.
Kathy.
Eric.
And we've got tonight's agenda in front of us. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll say.
Doug, I.
Karen, I.
John, I.
Karen, I.
Karen, I.
And consistent with our practice, we'll start and end the meeting with citizen comment regarding the items on the agenda. If anybody's here to speak with respect to items on the agenda, now would be a really good time to hear from you. If so, please just let us know who you are, where you're from, and what your interest is.
Jenny Walters.
Sure.
Six Seventeen Mississippi Drive. I'm on for the damage claim regarding the sewer backup that we had on June 16th. At that time, we had filed a claim many little days later. I hadn't heard anything for about eight weeks on that, so I contacted my insurance company to do a walk-through of the damage. And I have received that report back from them. It's a little different than what we submitted. The total on that report is $12,936.24. And I have a copy of that if anybody would like to see it.
What was it, number 12, what?
$12,936.24.
Has the city received that yet?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're looking to be reimbursed for that.
So you're looking for the reimbursement of that same value?
Yes.
All right. We do have that on the agenda. Crowd's usually small enough, we can reengage with you on that item.
Yeah.
If that makes sense. Thank you. Anything else from citizen comment? All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
One second.
Doug, I.
Karen, I.
John, I.
Karen, I.
Karen, I.
Next on the agenda, we've got the public hearing on a proposal to enter into a sewer revenue loan and dispersment agreement. So we're not displaying yet, Karen, are you?
Sorry, that's because I work my hair permanently, but I'm trying to be active.
All right. So the council members have got copies of this, and it is available online. But this is the public hearing pursuant to the dispersment agreement. And this is for which specific project?
This is for the, is this SRF, Karen, or P? CSRF for the Highway 20 station.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So this is the cleaning and design loan that we discussed, that is the 0% interest loan, interest loan with the state office, just for the engineering work. So as we previously mentioned, this allows us to get that project ready to go, but we have three years until that loan has to be finalized. So the current financing plan now would include this project in the calendar year 22 or 21 bond. So we, as it stands now, we would pay the P and D portion off fairly quickly in the next six months. But if something terrible happens, another pandemic, another windstorm, what have you, we also have the option to pull up a project delay. So this is committing the council to the cleaning and design portion, but nothing, it's not committed to the construction, not just for the construction.
So consistent with code, we're having the public hearing. At this point, we'll call the public hearing open. And if there are any objections to this from the public, this would be the time to hear them. Hearing no oral objections, no written objections being submitted, we can call the public hearing closed.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
One second.
Doug, I.
Karen.
John, I.
Karen, I.
Karen, I.
So with the public hearing done, the next action for us then would be to approve the resolution with respect to the same sewer revenue loan and dispersment agreement.
I have a question, first, if you don't mind.
You bet, Karen.
The fact that it says sewer revenue loan, do we use GO bonds or not?
Oh, yeah.
You can't use a GO revenue.
Well, you can use, you can use GO bonds to pay back, to pay back utility work, which is exclusively what the city has done at this point. The issue is that the state, they still require the revenue, the money to pay back the GO bond, to be provided by the sewer department.
But not if it's a GO bond?
Yes.
Yes, we're doing that with the GO.
Yeah.
We're doing that, but we didn't have to. With a GO bond.
No, but they are.
If you take the revenue bond, it's definitely got to come out of the revenue from the utility.
Correct.
You get a GO bond, it doesn't definitely have to come out of your revenue from the utility. You don't have to charge your customer.
You are correct, but we have, and for the last few projects that we have done, it's coming out of the sewer revenue for sewer fund and the water fund to pay down the GOs.
That's what we've been doing.
Yes.
Right, using sewer money to pay for sewer project and using water money to pay for water project.
But if we wanted to use other funds, we can do that with the GO bond, we can't do it with revenue.
That's right. I guess I'm confused. I mean, it's, so you want to tax them instead of, you want to tax them for it instead of...
I just want to make sure, well, it might be easier on residents. You don't know what the next couple of years is going to do, and to tack this on top of the wastewater treatment plant, we might want other options rather than the utility bill.
Well, the reason, so the reason you use sewer revenues to support sewer projects is because they're restricted for that use. We can't use sewer funds to put in a trail. We can use tax levy funds for that. So this is a, like we've talked about, this is considered good management, that each utility should be able to support itself. If you, if you turn it upside down by operating it, not bringing enough revenue to operate it, we potentially, that is what I would say would undercut. If we're using general fund money to then pay, support a sewer utility, then that general fund money, which is not restricted, but you're right, can be used for any of those things, is then though not able to pay for the things that have a revenue source. So the general city finance rule is if something has a revenue source, use that revenue to pay for it. And that's how you determine what your fees should be.
I understand all that. But we're about to check, we're already checking the resident up through September 2021 for a $7.9 million project. Now you want to add another $4 million, $4 million project, $3.5 million project on top of that. Do you realize what that's going to do?
So that is, but that's a, that's a singular project. With the wastewater plant, there's an operation cost, it's an ongoing, it is a forever to maintain project. So the lift station project is a GO bond project.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're on the, maybe we're completely agreeing in saying we're exact same thing.
We go with the GO, and that way we have, we are, we have the ability to use other funds rather than increasing utility.
Oh, that's correct. That's correct.
That was my question.
Yeah. I'm sorry. And we, we discussed that pretty thoroughly, the financial planner wanted to know that, you know, as we're, we're undergoing one big sewer plant project, and then we're looking at this potential other usage. So that, that absolutely had to be considered in the plan.
I thought, you know, I thought that, but I kept looking at the way it was referred to revenue loan.
Yeah, well, and that, and that is, I will truly agree with you, it's very unfortunate with the way the documentation is provided by the attorney, it's not usually in line with what we discuss it.
So we aren't going to automatically raise sewer fees again after, we're just going to do what's...
That's correct, because that, that, there are several things in the CIP that are identified and are used in that, in, you know, our next bond, which has been a couple of years, seven or 15 was the last GO bond. So, yeah, so there's a number of things identified, and this is just one of them. But really, the, a good chunk of that, or a portion of that can be offset with TIF revenue. So that's what, that's that natural formula we're tweaking for that GO bond is to, to not have most of that hit that bottom debt service line on the, on the tax certification.
I thought I understood, and then I just got a bit of a word in my gavel.
Yeah, no, and I apologize, I misunderstood the question, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right. So with that being explained, we, I think, had a motion. Did we?
No, I'll make a motion.
One second.
Doug, I. Karen, I.
John, I.
Karen, I.
All right. Next up, we're a number of items related to public works. The first one on the agenda here is the Cox Springs South Plans. And this one could probably use a little bit of narrative.
So this is the project, if you recall, I think it was two weeks ago, Deppards had a question on if this was moving forward. So I know this has been in the works since before I started working here, so this is finally the, the plans and the specs. So this is formally a county project. We have a cost share for the footage of the road which we own, which would be the west half of a portion of it. It does, they are working further south past City Roads. So we, these are presented as informational, we're reviewing them thoroughly, but obviously the county is pretty great to work with, so they are pretty hopeful that we can receive some advantageous bids with the economic factor being what it is and and the fact that Horsefield isn't playing right there, so they anticipate that they could put a pretty aggressive number out there. So I'm trying to get, you know, that big range, you could just really swing pretty quietly, so they have those costs, so I keep working on that. So once we know that final number, then that's when I'll, but this has been, we have known this is coming, so it's a counter forward in the CIP. And I think, because there's a pretty, is there a patch in that road right now? Is that correct, or there's a chunk that's out of it?
There's gravel, yeah. There's gravel section.
Yeah.
How did we become 26, 7, 26.76% responsible?
So that's, that's a square footage formula of the width of the road, we're responsible for half of it, for the footage from Highway 20 until the southern line. And then at the beginning, there was a lot of horizontal and vertical sight distance issues, so they're trying to peel things back. I got from a couple of [inaudible].
So the purpose in having this in the agenda today is for awareness and discussion. There is no formal action to be taken.
That's correct. They are planning to send it to bid at the end of September, so there's still some time to get it into [inaudible], but then it seems to be, it's almost over.
So from your perspective, Dean's perspective, everything's in order?
Yep.
We just need to wait for the county to continue through their process?
Correct.
Any other discussion needed on Cox Springs? All right, we'll move on to the Liliana Water Main Loop.
Oh, so this additionally was a late add. I also need to provide this as information because we got some, some additional data earlier this week that let us know this might not be able to move forward. The, the work that's going on around Thunder Hills Road, which I've seen a lot of social media buzz about, is the beginning of the front end road, the Thunder Valley Three front end road. So they also have quite a bit of water main work to do, which is going to require them to tap into the main, and we're going to need to switch some things up in terms of the Thunder Ridge water service for the, for about a month while they're working on that main, tapping into that main. So Dean had brought up the idea with the prospect of potentially continuing the water main that's on Liliana, that's slated to connect to loop with the Thunder Ridge, or the Thunder Hills Road water main, but it just, it hasn't paid it there yet because of the phasing. So he really sees that as advantageous to just complete that loop, and then it would have not required us to do some of the things we're going to have to do, like runoff and different well, while this project is going on. So, and the developers were in agreement, because it's one that's going to be done eventually anyways, they just haven't got there. But we, I think there's going to be some additional time constraints with the pipeline, it goes through the gas pipeline. So this was initially on here, and we were going to try to provide some more information and get, get some fingers arranged to get done in the next couple of weeks, but it's going to take longer than that. So it's still something we're looking at, and to see if there's just a benefit to maybe pushing this up, but I just don't know if that's going to happen. Pipeline can be a little bit like [inaudible]. And there's other, I mean, this is, this is a project, and it's got to be, it's got some design to be done through. So I just want you to know about something we're considering, and because they are going to be doing some pretty significant heat utility work down there as they prepare for, you know, potential commercial development. Any redundancies we can build into the system are always a huge advantage, so we look at those whenever we can. No, I think nothing else from the council, I just wanted to make you aware.
All right. Any other discussion with the council? We will then move on to the Walters Damage Claim. So the document you referred to, Jenny, is, is that in the notes?
On the nationwide one.
I don't believe that.
I got a copy of it.
Probably there. I can try to find it, put it in there. I did just add today a letter I received from our insurance, and it says a copy was sent to me that they found the city not to be negligent or, or at all. I didn't know we discussed some of the work session, I mean, these. I mean, sewer backups are, are not good for anyone. You know, the code of Iowa's position is that the city can never guarantee that sewer will back up, because we have no control of what is put in to sewer. In this instance, particularly with, I talked to Dean pretty extensively today, they, the actual blockage was near Vine.
Line Laken Vine.
Line Laken Vine by the manhole there. So, you know, it's no, there was no rainfall pressure before the, in the line, you know, he explained what happens, it is a collection of things that should not be in the sewer, namely, it's usually wipes of some sort, a lot of big feminine products. So you get, you get those and start to build up, and then sometimes when there's a rainfall or heavy usage, then they get pushed along and can, they just create a blockage. So like I said, it's, it's very, you know, unfortunate, there's plenty of K-slot present in that, so it's more, I think, you know, falls to the council to discuss, because there's...
There's also two commercial businesses around there that could potentially be putting excessive grease or paint in that line, that could cause an issue as well. And I'm not sure what the schedule is for expecting them to flush them, but I have noticed that since this has happened, they've been flushed. Ours has been flushed at least once a month now.
How does that...
Nothing ever happened until I did that road construction up there, never did again, whatever else they were doing, all the machines up there, the same.
How does that, how does that...
There was no work being done on the sewer lines, though, is the issue. I mean, I understand...
A lot of rock being pushed around.
How does the flow...
Not even the sewer line, though.
How does the flow work from the businesses there, the auto body shop? How does that, is that below or above?
I was down there today, Dean had a manhole, he was showing me not the same manhole where there was one up, and there was two balls of stuff in there that looked like disposable wipes, baby wipes, feminine products. And it wasn't toilet paper, it was stuff that showed me going in anyway. And he said, I get Jason, that down from, up by a gym's house, down, and they pulled up two big balls of this thing. A manhole before, a manhole before the problem in place.
So we've been there 18 years, we've never had a problem until, ever construction, they're going up there. I don't know if it's a problem or not, but it's all thick ones and down, but the same week that they're doing all that crap, I get two inches of shit in my basement.
What type of schedule are we on as far as...
Yeah, I mean, lines are, they're not jetted, lines are being, are jetted annually, certain chunks of line, not every line is jetted annually. So I'm not sure you're safe to flush towards a line, that's not, okay? So today...
It's possibly conservative, because it's been there two times.
Yeah, I have, they're doing it. So they weren't jetting.
To flush wherever it's flushed.
They're hooking up to the hydrant and running water through.
I've never seen him there in 15 years, twice in the last month. So he's worried about something, I want to hear.
Well, when I talked to Dean today, it wasn't because of his flushing, he was pulling my manholes because I was doing the locate, and he was sitting on the hill, he tries to where he's throwing the locate's at, whatever street it is, it doesn't matter, they try to pull my manholes and then run water, too flushy on that, but, so he was doing the loc, they were locating down, uh, what street it is, but down from the street, and he bumped the manhole there, found stuff, and he said it went up by the gym, and he started flushing down.
So there was a blockage down? There was a blockage down?
It was two balls of stuff, that, I mean, you could tell, there was wipes, ant wipes, there was, people with like face masks in there, the paper ones. I mean, it wasn't rock, so the concrete wasn't, it was, I'd say 90% of it was ant wipes.
I think monitor the business, the businesses in the area, or...
Yeah, I guess monitor their sewer just charge.
If there's a lot of businesses, the businesses, cars, which is, that, like, businesses in charge.
Right, I didn't, that's what I asked. I mean, whoever goes in track side, it's a restroom, they can flush whatever, down their toilets, too. I don't know.
Right, I mean, there's only doing, you know, the whole, the whole point of that is there's no way to prove whose fault it was. That's all, and this is, it's hard, super general, I've had this happen to me, I've had it to my family, so the, the, you know, it's my job to represent the city, city with taxpayers' legal position, so we need to find a spot where, you know, we try to take care of residents and make sure this doesn't happen, but we also can't set a precedent that the taxpayers are financially responsible for this happening, because there's, most often times, little to nothing, the city can be neutral. So that's, that's why these are, are tricky and hard, because it's, there's just often no way to identify the culprit.
Isn't there also something where it's within so many feet of your home that you're responsible?
Yeah, on your, on your property, you just...
Right, but isn't it so far from that property line that you're responsible, but beyond that, it's the city?
It was one of the [inaudible]. Hopefully, we're responsible.
Right.
Yeah, you're certainly responsible from the [inaudible].
Right, like there's a manhole, you know, out there directly, so it was way down.
Are you the second on the left on this unit?
So you're right here, correct? Number...
No, down one.
Yeah, we're the next number five.
And the one, the house below you didn't have anything?
They don't have, they don't have green, they're...
They don't have any [inaudible].
Otherwise, they wouldn't have.
Dean said this took the backup because it's the lowest point without a pump.
So the sewer must have been down that?
So these backed up from here this way, and these houses have pumps, so, and this is the lowest point. So, because this is this right here where the blockage was. And then this then comes this way, brings this way, that it was...
So where does the business, how do the businesses get tied into that?
Um, let's see, so this would be, was, I don't, I don't know. But again, this is, I mean, that's all information we can figure out. Again, it's really just going to prolong the guessing, but we have no information to say this is also a fault of the businesses either, so...
I mean, I understand protecting the taxpayers, not having to pay at the same time, the taxpayer, the one that caused the blockage. My question, they're [inaudible].
Did you guys put a [inaudible]?
We had now.
I have not, I didn't know you did before, yeah.
We didn't, yeah, this is [inaudible].
So the, I have a question. The difference between the $7,880 and the $12,930, that $5,000 plus is that, can you break that up more?
So it's just our insurance [inaudible].
Yeah, a lot of it was, you know, some of the items were estimated a little differently. I don't know, it's detailed in here, I don't...
And did your insurance company even say they covered it at all?
Yes.
They did? You have flood insurance, and that would...
Yeah.
That would have long covered it.
Yeah, but, yeah, we don't want the claim [inaudible]. We don't want... The [inaudible].
Well, I think there's certainly, hopefully, a sweet spot of compromise there, because the city has damage claims, and this is what I had discussed with Jenny, that the soft, there are some soft costs included in the insurance claim that are more, that are a product of the coverages that you purchase. So those are not hard damages, I guess you could say, so that's where we're, there is some, some of the differences coming in, the, you know, items lost, where there was damage, whereas like, you know, the time or...
The plant was an expense, the time was an expense.
Yeah, but the time is a soft cost, that's where that...
But it's a cost to us, I mean, just...
So were you guys okay with the first cost, or obviously you had a [inaudible] insurance cost? I mean, did you guys went through?
We could give more money from our insurance, so...
You gave us an itemized costing.
I did, yeah, and that is, that was a tough, you know...
Yeah, but just saying that, which, you know, would you be okay if we covered the $7,880? Would that actually get you guys taken care of, or are you looking more for the $12,000?
I'm also [inaudible].
So then your insurance is, I mean, then you should submit your insurance.
Yeah, I know what I mean.
But that's, that's, that's compromise. But that's, that's, that's compromise that we're talking about. I mean, that's why I would say that. I understand, but again, we've been there eighteen years. This did not happen. A, a new business moved in. B, there was construction on the road then. I just think it's way too coincidental that this happened during that time. But do you understand, there's no, there's, we, we, there's no actual data that can be used to. I mean, Willis is better than I've been here. Right, I mean, since I've been here a couple of years. So I mean, there, there's no reason to push. They can have buildup from where they're disposing of. Yeah, I mean, anybody on that line would have put things down.
Track side had been a mauer for thirty years before it was tracked.
Yeah, it's just enough, it's just, unfortunately, it's impossible to prove who's, who's at fault. If, if anybody's at fault, there's, there's a reason again, the law provides for the fact that the cities cannot guarantee this won't happen to any person, to the mayor, to himself, to any elected official. We are all at equal chance of this happening to us. So legally, there is not a, an avenue forward against the city. But there's been other claims. Other issues against the city?
Yeah.
Well, since I've been here, I know there was a, maybe you had some backups. And again, that, that was, if I understand, they negotiated how, I mean, that was not a.
No, that's it, this is, this is my bill of the council, this is very first time. And it sounds like it's the worst.
I know there was another one down on Jelissa, I don't know how long ago it was, but that guy was told that because it was within so many feet of his property, that it was his responsibility.
Because it is the right one. So he's my first blockage. So if it was probably, like it came from his house, we got blocked before it got to the bay.
Right.
So that was the first thing that was.
So I guess some kind of agreements are dug that, as we don't want the taxpayers to pay for. But the same hand, the taxpayers are probably the ones that, whether it be whoever, you know, whoever, whoever's at fault are the people that are, are causing. So one way or another, they're, they're, they're paying for it.
Right.
They're causing it, they're paying for it.
We should probably look into lines, see where this is coming from, where the taxes and whatever, or anything.
But I think the big, the big difference we need to find out is what's the difference between the seven, eight hundred dollars and the twelve? Twelve nine number is.
Nine three six. Three six, twelve nine three six.
And we don't have any type of policy written?
Policy on, that's probably the issue for the others.
Just on how to, how, what, what is our?
Well, on their turn, I, that's our policy. If we have a damage claim of any sort, windshield gets hit, the ball diamonds gets turned into I cap. I cap makes this determination. It doesn't go in the council to make those determinations. Saying I cap did not respond at all. Well, they have I cap rule that is not, it is not. I think the letter I got is ceasing to use, so I'm not sure if that. Yeah, they didn't receive it.
So when the, so when Ray did claim, did it go back?
Yes, I don't know what. It's a new song. Um. I, that, that's the claim that was here. Now is also during the construction? No.
No, it's not, it was ten years before.
Well, that's the bit. I just. That's not a problem there during the construction.
No, the issue they had there was they had their, no, they had their cell phones tied into the sanitary seat. Having tied it because they're so low. That was actually.
I don't know, I don't, yeah, I don't know if that was submitted. I know that that was a, um, also a cost shared resolution.
Some home saying the residents ended up paying to replace them.
They were tied.
I think the claim they're talking about was a different one.
Yeah, Karen and Jerry were probably.
No.
Karen, Jerry, Karen.
It was either when they were doing a police station or when they were doing, uh, they're doing a project for, uh, installing a new project, but I think, I think it had something with the police station.
Is it safe to say though that, like, all the things I go to, there's no, there, there's not time or particular, or soft costs or never reverse? That's. I know that. And one of the things everybody went on with that? So there was a water, there was a basement backup, a sewer backup in a basement over by a, on tennis. It was, it was, that was the cause of, that was caused by a storm event. And I, I, we can make a sewer line. But same, it's still back to the sewer. But I believe there was, um, there was the same, same damage to their basement foundation.
Jenny, may, may I ask, what is it that makes you not want to turn this in? You're paying for insurance flood coverage, right? What is it that makes you not want to use?
The claim itself, so our insurance will go up for it and the deductible.
So you're.
That will be paid.
I understand the deductible part of it. I've had, and I know we probably have different insurance companies, right? But I've had two claims in it for water, stormwater in my basement. And in neither case did it impact my rates.
So we have also had that and it has impacted our rate. And we actually lost insurance because of multiple claims on that.
Okay.
So I'm trying to avoid that as well.
We should talk about insurance companies.
Yeah. And I work for them.
So addressing the council, just again, from the citizen point of view, um, and precedent that we have to consider. By covering this in its entirety as a, as a resident, I can cancel my flood insurance and not have to pay that extra premium.
They've never come to the state.
Kathy?
I don't think, I don't think this is flooding.
Yeah.
So the, the flood insurance covers backup, whether it be water wars.
Significantly.
There's a little difference between water and sewer water.
Either way, it's water in the basement and it's covered by the same policy.
True.
So, there, there is nothing that says we have to act on this tonight. Clearly, there's a lot of debate going on and good debate. Um, the choice in front of the council today would be to either decline the request, approve it, or defer it for a future meeting.
Well, I'd like to see the insurance plan numbers. And just review those versus the seven eighty that we received prior. And see just, you know, how they kind of stack up, what differences are, soft numbers that we're talking about. Well, she's gonna leave that to us.
Yeah, I can report right now.
I mean, ultimately, we all don't want to be in your shoes and we'd like to have the city help you out. Help me out, help anybody else out who's saying shit. But we also want to give a try to the city to, you know, set precedents. Just like Jim, you know, hopefully no one else in all these different countries, so.
Well, I think whatever we decide to do here, whatever, whatever it is, we need to put a, some sort of policy in place that we can just sit there and point to. So this, so then at that point, it is purely black and white. It's not, you know, two months down the road, someone else comes in, two months down the road, someone else comes in and.
Well, and yeah, no, I think that's a good idea. But I, I do think it is worth mentioning like Karen, that's the policy you have, it's submitted I cap, I cap rules what that's seen up. I think this is, this is additional consideration and I think this is good and helpful. Because I don't want the, the, I don't want to put the, give the perception that we don't have policy. We do.
Well, I guess maybe.
In this instance, I guess, I think we're taking an extra step to, to offer this additional discussion. So I want, I just, I want to make sure that's noted because per policy, this will be over. But I, this is certainly worth. Do we have details on what their analysis was? All right. I don't, we can't even get those. Get a house. Yeah, yeah, and they're gonna have their interviews with Dean, their interviews with you. But yeah, that's, that's just something we are, we pay for something provided to us.
Is your damage just been taken care of already?
No, we are in the middle of it. Cause I'm waiting to decide whether we're gonna turn it into our insurance or we're getting good at the first order. We're in the middle. And have been for a couple of months now. I hate to interrupt, I know I'm hard, but I have a question. As far as the council members, but as far as how this was reviewed, that we are responsible as homeowners from so far from our, from our house, our grain out to the street. And it sounds like, when I understand, that you made the conclusion that it wasn't caused by them and their grain, it was caused by the rain in the street. If we can, if the city, let's ask, we have the city can't just say who it's from exactly as all the citizens, you know? Cause I guess it was coming from my house, I'm sorry, it was me. So white, sorry. But if it was from our house, and you can tell that, I'd expect they can help, we can see the person, do you know what I mean? But we can't tell that, right? We can't tell where it's coming from. So is it, is it everybody's? Is it the citizens' responsibility to help? Like maybe because it wasn't their fault? Well, we know that it wasn't their fault. It could have been you, it could have been them. That, that's where this just falls apart. The way we analyze everything, it, this is just, it's terrible. There's, there's no way to say that it was them or it wasn't them. It could have been anybody on that line. It could have been your kid flushing a handful of G I Jones. It, it, I mean, there's just, it's so hard with infrastructure that's underground to determine what caused it. And then, I'm sorry, cause I thought you pointed at the grain or where the blockage is at. Well, that's where the manhole is, but a clock can travel. We have some manholes in our area and the clock was up. Yeah, the line is going down the manhole, so then it just travels and it's just a matter of where it can come up. Which is why it's, yeah, a really just unfortunate, yucky thing for everyone. So I will send this file right now to the council. And, but we can, I mean, I will say, they, Jenny goes great to work with. I cap was not very responsible at certain points, so we, um, I hope to provide a, we, you know, they have been variation. So if I get this deal, I would definitely add a date for that from the point of view of the reservation, seems to be clear.
Is there a time date on that, uh, insurance quote claim?
What do you mean?
On, on your, is there any time sensitive stuff on, from your insurance company?
You mean, make a decision by next day? Typically not, typically not.
I mean, they have already sent us a check, I'm just holding on to it because I, and they have their process of, you know, subrogation also. That's why I wanted to know the details of the analysis because they have to go through their process if I did as well. I just kind of want to know what the differences between them. And so John, you probably know about, I mean, what does that process look like from the insurance angle?
As far as subrogation?
Yeah.
Basically, if, whatever, we can't come to terms, you decide we're gonna go the insurance route. The insurance company then would basically, um, come after us. Whether they come after our insurance company with their, with their attorneys or whatever, or come up, just to grab a direct address, see if they want to pay. But with the fact that we've got this, this declination letter from our insurance company, that looks like it's gonna get messy. If they go that route. I mean, cause our insurance company's saying we're not responsible. So that would draw things out as far as you guys getting any monies back or coming off of your claims history longer. Cause it, I mean. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm interested, I would be interested to know what the odds are with the statute. Backing what the city has, how incentivized they would need to try.
Well, typically, I mean, to be honest, with a twelve thousand dollar claim, a lot of insurance companies aren't gonna submerge it. By the time they get an attorney, attorney involved, it's either they're gonna take a twelve thousand dollar claim to a twenty thousand dollar claim in a heartbeat. So they probably, they probably won't even try, in my experience. So again, our choice here is approve, deny, or defer. Do we feel like we've got all the information that we want to make a decision? I would like to see the difference between the two.
I'd like to see their insurance code. I understand you got a little.
Right. Can we, does this have to be done via vote?
If it's gonna exceed ten thousand dollars.
It exceeds Whitney's spending authority, so does it council matter?
That does not fit the law.
I wish you guys would be okay with that seven thousand eight eighty. The city give you that.
So I just want to be clear, the only acceptable solution to is the total insurance number. For return in insurance and we get a deductible back, but that's not the project I heard of. I mean, I would absolutely think the city should come with a deductible if that's the route.
Oh, yes. What's a deductible, a thousand dollars?
Fifty million.
In the city's eyes, that's probably, that's rough for us. We wouldn't stress for you guys, do you know what I mean?
Sure, I don't think that's right, but sure.
What are your thoughts?
I would place the motion. I mean, I think we need to make a call. Cause it's in our mind. But the other side of me is, how old was the carpet, the covers and stuff downstairs? And I don't know insurance personally at all. I ain't insurance companies, but.
So do I.
But what I'm looking at is, we got usage out of that stuff for a hundred years.
With depreciation this time around?
Well, I'm not, I, I haven't seen that. I'm just, well, I hope it's sent, but you guys sent us. And with that in mind, with my daughter actually, two thousand five, uh, in value, they even paid for a new car. We're gonna think what the value of that was, I mean, if you want to go forward with it.
There's a depreciation schedule in there?
And so, I've all backed up John and Jerry. I don't think I can make a decision without reading my policy. At the same time, I know it's. At the same time, I know it's thanks for you guys, we're still dealing with it, but. But if I was a nurse, you'd have to decide whether I want to.
So is there a way? Yep. We took a look at this tonight, tomorrow, whenever, whenever we get to it, and we come to a consensus, whatever that consensus is on Friday or Monday or whatever, we can get the word out to these guys. This is what we're looking at doing, even though it can't happen till, whatever the next meeting is.
Special session. Well, I mean, if it's, like I said, if it's a, if it's a check that's gonna be cut over $10,000, it's gotta, it's not, we can do it.
So then, we all wanna take a look at that, let's see what the differences are, right?
Your report. Your thoughts?
And all of my kids had problems with the insurance company. They had service pro cleanup, and they didn't send them the right second. And they said they must wear the exact cost, and the insurance company would recover. I'm thinking, the problem would be more, we would eliminate some of that with the insurance company, and that case has a wishy-washy going on. That would be, otherwise, I don't know, we're gonna turn around and argue this year. I do believe and convinced they had something to do with construction. And I don't know what to do to make a change of mind, and I don't know. So I know that either way, if we don't act with the city, doesn't make responsibility. On the other hand, if the city takes responsibility, we're gonna have more amount of doors to climb in this.
And hopefully this doesn't happen to Robert.
Because we have decent infrastructures, the fact that this happened, I think we should look into what's going on in mind.
I would have, I would have believed at the time that it happened that it was private construction. Dean says not, so I don't know which way to go.
It's concerning to me that there's still time to pocket and find it after this. And again, now, 18 years later.
It's been there for a while.
Yeah.
Been the last year, it's been there 18 years. But I think if you go to any city, just ever since March, it's avoided out all this stuff. People just don't think it's good, but blue towels, stuff, dirty.
Yeah, we know there's been a lot of the wipes, a lot of the anti-bacterial wipes.
That's gotta be a lot of wipes.
Well, it's, it's that those super users get caught on stuff, that's, it's then just makes it bad, bad combination. Yeah, I mean, this is called Spirit Containment, so I think you guys should know, we'll have it on your ICAP now. Not that you need to look at it now, but it.
I'd like to take a look at it, so. Get the table for the next meeting, or look at it now?
So which would we like to do? It is on here as a discussion item. As, as Whitney pointed out, this is, uh, the, the discussion is courtesy to the citizens in the first place. So there is no requirement for an action. But we do have other items on the agenda as well tonight. So what's the, what's the council preference here? Are we, can we make a decision how we wanna proceed?
Are there like two council members that wanna maybe step up to spearhead it and that I can get through tomorrow? I can come, I like the baby style more, and then we could, like, I have some candy over to other one, so.
Just really want to go between the two of them. Granted, the first one wasn't having that advice that it sounded like this one is, just to go through.
Yep, yep.
So how about that? John and Jerry, would you be willing to serve as a small committee with Whitney, study this further after tonight? Doug, Karen, are you okay with that?
Well, after I get with them, then I can get with, I can get with everybody else that did.
Could you say that? Okay.
Oh, asking to your word.
Okay. That's what we'll get working on tomorrow. All right, so that's the action we'll take with that one?
Yep.
And then we will move on. Anything else that you two wanna offer at this point? All right. Thanks for the good discussion on that. Uh, next item on here is the Royal Oaks sidewalks, Vine, Missy, Stormwater discussion. Might as well keep the map up. Which particular item came up? Who, uh, who provides the narrative for this one? Whitney?
I know Kathy wanted to talk about, about this as a discussion item. I did discuss the Vine disease. I talked about this with Dean pretty in depth today, so I'm okay with you want to share what you're concerned with, you and I can.
I don't know the dean's that I just know with.
Was it Missy this house right here, correct?
Lizzy does, um, local, we got her in the front, and she's got an open driveway cut on the side. So all of the Royal Oaks stuff, drainage, storm drainage is coming down to her backyard.
Which, I'm sure, which one?
Where it says back, one of them, right?
Okay.
Is that the own, well, Vine Street and then?
Missy.
So Missy has curb and gutter.
Yeah, how about, what is it?
Vine.
No, going up to.
Lila.
Lila, so they don't have curb and gutter there, correct?
Right.
So this would be essentially another Brady Street, right?
So what's the?
She's got, she's got like a river in the backyard. And when they pile snow in the winter, they pile it all up at the end of Missy Drive on her front, so.
Because they can't come down from the tracks?
I don't know why they do that, but they pile it all up.
They, they do it to the, to the right side of Missy? As we're looking at it, like right there?
Yeah.
With the, their street needs to be on the street. I wonder if there's vehicles parked.
So you wanna, you wanna talk about putting curb and gutter in there?
Well, that's what she's wondering about on Vine Street, she could at least get a curb and gutter. Think that don't have from, coming around through the yard.
I think that'd be a project, just like to get the Brady, if you have to go and get mine, they.
May I take a moment?
I think when she was talking to Dean, she was wondering why if they were doing the other end of, if they were doing Deerwood Corner around the corner, why they just didn't continue doing things that street, you know, while they were right there. That's what brought the.
Of course, we said it was about curb and gutter.
That, that's gotta be one of the last ones, we don't have curb and gutter, isn't it?
That's gotta be close.
Right, yeah.
That is, that is the name. So the curb and gutter, uh, and right at that curb going on to Lila, so it's.
Right. Just past that driveway, that upper left.
Right, yeah. How about coming on Vine? Is there anything on Vine at all?
No.
No.
I don't know. It's like it was.
Has. That house and lot have been there and in that condition for some time. Has something changed recently that's causing this to come to the surface?
No, she was putting up with this previously, I don't know how long she's lived there, but when she saw them doing the work up above, her question was then, why didn't she keep this, you know, it's one of the last parts of town.
Right there, that, was it Vine Street? Vine, Street, Street Art.
Mixer.
Or D was that, they would put that manhole, that said it needs replacement because it deteriorated. And that's one of, most of the bottoms, that's just gonna have a swell versus the channel. Where there's a channel, and a lot of stuff that's in sort of keep on going instead of falling off the side. It causes bigger problems.
They would just run a bunch of their lines down the road?
What?
They would just run a bunch of their lines down there when they were putting them low at East?
Did we come? No, we didn't.
We had to turn down across under the tracks, so we should have gone through there.
No, they were, they were west of our car.
By the way.
Yeah, I remember we board west, came up around, came up like Jim's house, tapped in up there, I think.
There was standing manhole, I think, 94.
Yeah, but those are, those are.
Old ones.
Yeah, they're, they're probably in the town.
So I think, do we wanna put this on a?
Yeah, I mean, so this is, I mean, this is, like you said, this is just geared to, like, the short answer, but you could ask, and why? And you could, you know, we know what that project costs, and we just did this little stretch of Deerwood, little stretch of Brady. So, you know, why didn't we go all the way down here and here? Well, that became a part of the project cost. So, I mean, that's the age to her immediate question, but yeah, I mean, her concern is obviously valid, and so it's something, you know, our roads that don't have curb and gutter, and we need to add it to the CIP and our street replacement plan. And we're talking about other infrastructure, we address streets, we usually address the infrastructure of the road, so we don't have to, you know, dig things up more than once, so this is just a good, this is just a good example, I think, of really the normal life cycle of city stuff. We have, um, that a little kind of privilege to not have to deal with, you know, your first, for the first time, really seeing some of our infrastructure age a little bit, so. You know, it's not.
I don't think there's anything wrong with it, really, so.
Well, it's pretty rough.
Is it?
It's pretty choppy.
Is it?
Yeah, it's all rusted out.
Is it getting behind the traffic, not that it hits too?
That I don't know. I know it's. Outdoor construction.
I don't know, absolutely. I mean, you're really just beating people off in this.
And really the lower end of Missy, right?
Yeah, because nobody else would want them to come back around. Everybody's on Royal Oaks Drive, that's pretty.
So I've actually got three ways in the mountain of, well, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, it's, I mean, it's not a super high traffic area, but I mean, curb, curb and gutter will help, and it's not gonna solve the problem. Again, it's a low spot, the backyard's just lows, but she's, you know, there, there are five dozen homes that, you know, in piazzos together at the neighborhood, has, has kind of the low guy. But, you know, curb, curb and gutter will help, it would take lots of curb, because anything else is still gonna, is still gonna flow down, so.
The people across the street have got their whole yard and, um, are digging it, because they were getting flooded all the time too. Um, the other side of Missy.
Right.
And they did that, I think, somewhere before last.
Which one's?
Right side?
No, the next one down. Yeah, they don't know how the yard is rated, so, I mean, they directed that water also, so I don't know if they knew that. And I don't know, you guys, yeah, and I, I mean, that's not something she's.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's hard.
Doug, we should have more conversation.
Just gotta get that water on up there.
Go work it. Gotta get you down, let's address it.
So what I think I'm hearing from the conversation here, and again, this is a formal agenda item that needs an action. But I'm, I'm, I'm hearing at least an appetite to consider this in our continual, our regular continuous improvement plan, updating. So we just need to make a note to factor this in the next time we are reviewing the continuous improvement plan, to consider closing out this curb and gutter for the.
Yeah, I mean, if she knew something in the plans to, should she?
Which makes logical reason to ask the question, it's you're right there, why wouldn't you?
Yeah.
Without knowing the cost. I have to ask the safe question.
Oh, yeah, she, she, right, I mean, it did just, and I, and I can follow up to it, but yeah, I mean, I know it's the, you know, the, the cost of her living there for this. Make everybody's time for it, so.
So we got Vine, Lila, and Deerwood East, right? That's just, there's nothing on there, really.
Yeah. No, Dean and I have meeting on Deerwood East tomorrow. Again, so this is, you know, from where I sit, I hear a lot of this, and so, what's up with that? Well, this, I think there's some potential expansion, being it's one. And this, I mean, this road, and I, I went to the storage unit, are they back here?
Yeah, I've been there.
And it does, like, you get halfway down here, and then you can't tell, like, am I on the road, where am I going? Am I just supposed to drive over on this stuff? So. They just have some questions or plans for that, and figuring out what the future of this looks like kind of plays into the decisions being made with, with how the road's gonna perform, so, yeah, that, this is, again, they're, it's a very valid concerns. It's just a little bit hard sometimes to relay how, how high up we have to, the council has to look at this stuff, because every neighborhood has its problems and projects. So we just gotta try to prioritize them and figure out how we can get the most money for our.
So Whitney, do you have that noted for the next CIP discussion?
Yes.
Specifically talking about Vine and Missy.
I got this, I've. Okay, then there's Royal Oaks Drive, which I don't think you're going for some future planning. I mean, that is very dangerous for kids on bikes, families trying to walk their little kids. It needs a sidewalk. So they have a safe place to walk.
How about parking on one side? Would that make?
Well, that just moves all the traffic along to the other side, and it still doesn't provide a walkway for it. I mean, I don't know which side to want, the cars to park on, or this.
That sidewalk's gonna be on the resident's property, right, four foot, probably three foot from the curb, so you're gonna have to.
I don't think they have to be three, they have eight, seven.
Right on curb.
Don't you do, no, don't you do like 20 something inches of it?
24 something.
So are we gonna get all these residents to buy in to put a curb, uh, put a sidewalk in?
And take care of their sidewalk after we put it in for them.
Are we putting it in for them, or they don't?
We can assess these restaurants for sidewalks.
That's what most cities do, don't they?
Oh, that's what I, I don't think we should do that.
Where we've, we've had assessment as a topic, and I don't, I'm not gonna do that.
I, I don't know, I just, yeah, I.
I mean, somebody said that we should start, um, putting sidewalks in when we have new construction, and that's a great idea. But for this, I mean, it's not like, it's, it's the main walkway for everybody in that subdivision, and there's so many teenagers and cars parked on the streets. Somebody's gonna get hit. I just think we should do something before somebody gets hurt.
I walk there just about every day, my kids rent their bikes there, my wife and everybody walks there. Everybody walks there, so it's, it's on the people everywhere there to, to know that people are walking, right? To be conscious of.
Okay, have you been on Royal Oaks when they're going up and down?
Yeah.
They couldn't care less if there's anybody walking or on a bike.
Kathy, we, we don't have a policy or precedent about putting sidewalks in, yet, right? There's, so there's no precedent of this. If we were to decide that we as a city wanna make that a policy, that we're going to put sidewalks in, then the next logical thing would be to consider, okay, what's the prioritization? We can't do all of them at once. So the next step of that conversation, I would think, would include deciding where we're going to do the first sidewalks. What, what is it that makes Royal Oaks Drive the first priority, as opposed to any other street in the city?
Uh, it's really good that we got a trails and, um, trail plan done right now, because they're.
We have one of those with the, the main reason.
Okay, so.
So Royal Oaks Drive is like the main. So Royal Oaks Drive is like the main entrance and exit for that subdivision. If you're over in a ginger or a subdivision, you're coming towards Bird's Road is your main direct. There, there's a sidewalk there.
There's not a sidewalk there?
There's a sidewalk on Bird's Road.
On Bird's Road, I think, I mean, on Ginger.
I mean, those are all like side streets that come towards.
There's a sidewalk on Thunder Valley too. We made sure that got put in with the new construction. Remember when they came?
On the way out.
On the way out. That hasn't had a sidewalk because it's, I mean.
What is the objective of this discussion tonight?
Um, to, I just want something to tell.
Okay. And are you expecting that to be done by a council motion? Or are you looking for that to be incorporated in some other planning activity?
Well, I mean, we make changes every year in planning and projects and whatever. I just think you cannot wait for years.
We have done that in the past. We have done that in the past. We are shifting to being far more adept at planning. And, and this, I would presume, is not a inconsequential expense. This wouldn't be a trivial project. So it seems like a natural fit for the C I P. So similar to the work we're talking about.
It's part of the years.
Unless, unless this body decides to make it a higher priority during the C I P prioritization. There's, there's an exercise we do annually, right? Exercise, to, to prioritize projects.
I, I agree with you, yeah, that every street should have sidewalks on. I mean, how we get there, I don't know. But I just wanted to make the comment that the subdivision should have, it should be managed with the foot sidewalks. And riding with, with other, some other utilities like fiber, common fiber and stuff. But I agree, I, I think we need sidewalks.
So nobody else is gonna do that but this body.
Right.
So if that's what this group wants, then this group needs to put in place an ordinance there, or, or, or resolution or whatever the right mechanism is, to put that on the new developments. So at least we stop creating neighborhoods that don't have these.
Right.
But that's on us.
Yes.
And then if we want to go back and try to do this with other neighborhoods, then the C I P is the right method. It's the responsible way to manage large projects. That would be the right process for us to then add this in.
Do you presume the sidewalks come the property of the owner of the house that sits on it?
Say that again.
The sidewalk would come the property of the house.
The homeowner.
Again, yeah. So, yeah, the homeowner to smooth it, if it breaks up, it's possible that, and it's better.
And if the developer doesn't put it in, it's the homeowner to put it in. The city's gonna make it with the homeowner.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of precedent out there of, of homeowners having to put sidewalk in at their expense. But again, you're the city council. You can decide how you want to manage that for Piasta.
So, so is there anything of a group of people to say it's five houses on this block that want to put sidewalks in? And they did it on their own, but do you think the city would give us on that? Do there are orders? I, I guess I'm saying, you're saying that you can do that?
No, but I think we'd want to, we'd want a uniform of some sort.
Right.
Like, I don't know how you manage that, but you'd want some sort of uniform.
You want to, you don't have to. I mean, you can't have like a sidewalk on the front of my house and five houses down, you have another sidewalk. That's not gonna help.
Replacement is.
No, but they're willing to do it at their expense. I would certainly, that's something the city would want to harness. In the previous community I was in, we had a sidewalk installation and replacement reimbursement program. So essentially the city had a standing policy and program that reimbursed for one half of the cost of sidewalk installation or replacement. And I don't know how this, you know, to lay over an existing community, but this is just an example of some mechanisms that cities use. So whether, um, again, here's gonna be downed or replaced or it put in, the council allocated a amount of money every year and it was like a, a use it till it's gone. So first come, first served, the, the residents that didn't use it. Then when that ten thousand dollars was gone, then for the fiscal year, then that program is not available. So that's, that's again, an example of how something like that works. So this is not, sidewalks are contentious and a hot topic in nearly every community. So there's a lot of, I think there are people like you that have lost their seats over things like this. So we're tied to the one, we know that it can be on time. So we're not the first group to try to tackle it. But, yeah, I mean, I, I look forward to when we have a lot more sidewalks. We love.
I think there's general acceptance sidewalks are good.
Yeah.
I haven't heard anybody argue that we shouldn't have sidewalks. The, the real question is, what's the mechanism or the method by which we're going to get them where they don't exist?
First up is make sure every new subdivision was required to.
Yeah, stop creating subdivisions that don't have.
Yes, stop approving.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
So I do hope it's impossible to get a couple of those part and take a look and determine which would be the best type, the best side of the street and the rough estimate, four point five. What would the cost be?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the purpose right now, I think it must not come from the side, sidewalk even point eight, point B. But then at least we know.
Sure.
Our, our N G can probably give us that right now on a foot. And I know Matt, maybe he'll get us.
Yeah, we can get a budgetary cost per foot. That would be very helpful for that kind of discussion.
I don't know, we need that to do it.
No, but I know they can just, no, we wouldn't have to pay them to do it. They can rattle off their head. I mean, I know Matt, Matt Abel told me, I mean, it can be three, thirty-five dollars a, a foot, depending on what.
So you need a recommendation outside of the street to go on.
Oh, yeah, I don't, yeah, that's gonna probably depend on, we would know, I mean, we don't want to go on top of any major wanting to, yeah, I think that, that'd be different for a green. But, yeah, those are exactly the things that we would have to figure out in every.
Well, if you know how much wood to pick up, the most green space in between, you know the utilities. And if you got all the driveways on one side and not on the other, I can see where you'd be off. We tend to go to the other.
Go to the north.
So similar to what we did before, maybe there's an opportunity here to have a sidewalk committee to study this a little bit deeper and bring a recommendation back to the council.
Yeah.
Do any council members care to be a part of that?
Sure.
So you want to be involved in that as a client?
To be compliant with the quorum, we would need to keep it to two. So are we hearing Doug and Kathy?
Sure.
Great. Thank you both. Start a new initiative. This is wonderful. All right. So I'm gonna move along from public works to administration. We've got the Safe Routes to School Project. Chief Comer, did you have a narrative on what that is? Or was that?
Basically, what you've been covering this, you know, before I got here, this is now, over your process. You put a lot of work into it. Basically, what they're looking for is on Bird's Road and Cox Springs, putting in, uh, speed signs, um, right by the schools. So there'd be two in front of West to view, correct, excuse me, Cast Elementary. And then there'd be three in front of my seat. So there'd be two long Cox Springs and one on Bird's going east, um, where these speed signs would be. It's just gonna be a great benefit to the public safety. So, what do you got to add up there?
No, only that this does.
It's been a long process going between D O T and.
Yeah, I'm comparably familiar with the D O T. And also, this is funded with, um, largely giving two-thirds with grand dollars. Probably, I mean, the original estimate, whatever grant is gonna cover it all, like that will be two thousand fifteen, sixteen. So anyways, it's still great value for the city. But the council needs to award the contract to Beach or Electric and, and then we will have to execute it and get their signatures and the, and we provide it to the D O T for their final approval and then they can begin the project. Be very, very short term, but there, four of the signs are the radar signs. So they'll, it should get some attention. I know Chief Comer had a, my kids were pretty thrilled to see him nail, nail it on the black eyes. How they viewed it on the first day of school.
That was active. It's, uh, presence of young speed in schools and this.
Good. That's what the rules are there for.
I'll make a motion to the board, either, I think, for eight thousand three hundred six. Six.
Second.
Doug.
Karen.
John.
Jerry.
Karen.
I haven't patiently waited for an hour and twenty minutes. We can get to another topic I think some of the attendants are interested in. That would be the third reading of the ordinance related to, uh, allowing all-terrain vehicles and off-road utility vehicles on city streets. So I think the procedure here is we need to, this is a public hearing, right?
No.
Karen, oh, okay.
Just a, a third reading, the adoption of the ordinance.
I make a motion to adopt the third reading of the ordinance with A T V U T V in the city of Dax.
I'll second.
Bye, guys.
Karen.
John.
Jerry.
Karen.
Who seconded that? Was that Karen?
And so that motion passed with three ayes and two nays. Did I hear that correctly? Karen, you're wearing a? Okay. And then the next item on there is the adoption of the ordinance itself?
I'll make a motion to the Dax ordinance. Second. Doug.
Karen.
John.
Jerry.
Karen.
The motion carries with three ayes. Next on the agenda is the CARES Act Resolution. Here we're looking at a resolution as part of the process for requesting reimbursement from the state of Iowa, right, Whitney?
Yes, so the governor recently opened up a hundred twenty-five million dollars from CARES Act funding that they received from the federal government to be allocated to local governments for reimbursing expenses. So we are, first of all, looking at finishing, or getting the, the technology we need so that we can do virtual meetings if we have to, or get members of the council, quarantine your staff, the draft to be able to log in, hear what's going on and converse with the people that are here. So those costs will be fully reimbursed by this. In addition to, um, a percentage of public safety funds from the pandemic. We started the pandemic, which they're saving since March first until now. So a percentage of those are able to be reimbursed for the sake of simplicity. They said, we're just gonna give you a flat percentage because we're really disinfecting home safety. And so we will be submitting for some of that also. Each, each community has a cap, so ours is right over forty-four thousand dollars. That is our max for reimbursement. Every city has a, has a max, um, per, it's, it's based out of their capital for. So we will be putting, we'll have two submissions. There's a submission from March till the end of July and there's a submission from September to the end of the year. So this resolution will require that it be submitted in the, the, the system of the state's utilizing process for reimbursement.
So this will require a motion and a vote.
I'll make a motion. Approve the resolution, call it, it's a best for your person.
One second.
Doug.
Karen.
John.
Jerry.
Karen.
Next up is sealant replacement for the building we are sitting in right now. Once again, Whitney, would you like to provide a short narrative for?
Yes, so this has been something that has been on the radar of the P C C for many years. The P C C board, so they have struggled with the existing copping and sealant and also really struggle to find somebody that does this in scale that we need to do. So I know Stacy has been working over a number of months to do research and has, has reached out to several other buildings, precast buildings like ours, to find and accept the company. People have, um, they have a lot of recommendations of who not teams, much due recommendations on who to use. So this is essentially something provider, we need, she could come up with that, is able to to treat the entire building. The, it's the P C C's board's desire to have this done before the, the winter. They indicate that this is long overdue. I, I know just from a tangible, which I didn't need to take a lot of water at different times, raining, snow. So we would like to get on a, probably an annual schedule or a biannual schedule of, of tuning up with this. But that's, that's just not how it's been done so far. So the building needs, needs copped.
I think it's every fifteen years, right?
Yeah, that's what, what.
So they cut, they've cut the copping, whole fall, put the copping. And that's just, I mean, it's from these buildings. They do it through all the whole part. Fifteen, ten, fifteen years, depending on the color and the type of copping. I don't know if this is, William just said it, I don't know if that's who did that.
I think it is.
They did a great job.
Oh, yeah, because they, they, I'm only saying that they've done a couple. Although a lot of the business is on tap.
Fortunately, these buildings last a long time and they're exploding, they're lucky.
So, so the P C C won't go, they won't tell us, or all of it, or just all the balance?
Well, we, um, there is no longer such thing as P C C funds in our funds. We have, you got married, so now your wife has access to your. So, yeah, so we have shifted things. This, this will be paid for out of a building maintenance. But, so a portion of those funds are pulled from the community center capital. That's charged on, that's charged on, on all memberships. So a portion will come from that, a portion comes from bank of all revenues. And that's what we've spent a lot of time last week sorting out, how to make sure this building gives responsibility this, so that in a way that makes sense. So again, there, there were some things on the P C C capital C I P that will not, that have changed significantly. They're not costing as much, so the dollars from that will be used to cover this.
So there's two costs here, first is the, you have thirty-four, two seventy-one.
Yes, and it's those together. So the first quote did not include all the doors and windows, which they wanted, which is, I know up here, especially out here where how the water comes in.
Yeah, it's here.
Yeah. Yeah, there's the windows on, in our office. So that was added. Added afterwards. I know Karen and I had a good conversation about it and I know Stacy talked to you today, didn't she? You know, just when you were looking through some of the, the one T issues and.
This is forty-three, one thirty-four is the total.
This definitely qualifies as a not exciting work on, but necessary. Feels like we're kind of.
I'll make a motion to approve, call it, call it.
Doug. Doug.
Karen.
John.
Jerry.
Karen.
Kathy, I didn't hear yours.
Karen.
Aye. So the motion carries with five ayes. And then lastly, on the administrative part of the agenda, we have the urban revitalization draft review. This one will look for a motion directing the administrator to work with the bond council to formalize the draft urban revitalization plan.
I have had multiple conversations with Wes since we met last. Unfortunately, also, there's been. Unfortunately, also there's been some really bad developments in building, the constant building materials in the last month, especially, it's getting really out of control. Anyways, it's just, it's a weird time, but this project, thankfully, it's go through. He has locked into it, it's a development agreement, so it is something that's going to, going to happen. I did throw in today a analysis of the, so an economic impact. So the urban revitalization draft is, is a rough draft, so legal hasn't seen that yet. But I mean, that's a, that's a draft I put together. So that's what the plan will look like. They may make some tweaks to some language or some things they want to see. But that lays out the city's position of using, you know, we were setting up this plan to satisfy the legal requirement for the use of this tool. I mean, we talked about, you know, we talked about the fact that it probably doesn't exist until we understand what our needs are at the location of the city. That this plan will be, will be specific to this legal description of just this lot until we understand what else our needs are. So you don't have to, this, this specific tax abatement structure is not available to any other properties under, under this draft. It would not be available to any properties other legal descriptions describe to you. So the, the abatement schedule is on the, it's not in the, it's written out in words.
Page four.
Yeah, so page four.
And if you want, you can read the text, but the easier version is it's five years at a hundred percent. The next three years at seventy percent, and then the last two years at sixty percent. That's what's in the draft.
Which is different than what we talked about.
Yes, so I, I, again, I have probably ten conversations with what's set, set suite in that last, two schedules and working everything out and looking at his numbers. So I, you know, I'm taking this very seriously because I feel like it's important. I don't want us to over, you know, get too aggressive, but while still harnessing, I mean, these opportunities are also things that, that come and go and aren't, aren't here every day. So I mean, this is potentially, it's about a ten, twelve million dollar project. So that's, those are the dollars going in. Thankfully, the site is, is basically dig ready. We don't have to extend any water sewer veins, which is a kind of a unique advantage over sometimes other projects. And you'll see the, I wanted to look at the economic impact to make sure, you know, this isn't ever something that's getting turned upside down. But the, the prospect of bringing a hundred eighty-four students to town that are currently here is really pretty phenomenal. His, his business model includes, the students just paying one fee, so their utilities, all that will just be wrapped up in one check that they're writing to his management agency. So I, we ran some estimates on utility usage, can look at what that will be, you know. Because this is the, this public-private partnership that involves the college level in the land, that makes this taxable to us, which will not be the case if this, if the college opened. So this looks, you know, over twenty years, it's almost a million dollars in tax revenue just from one property for us and the other, I mean, significant revenue from the school district for the county and also for the college itself. So I, it is, it is different than what we talked about. Wes really indicated that this is something he, the stability, stability of the beginning of the deal is of massive value to him right now with uncertainty in, in basically the market, both with his, you know, with his construction plans and he's really, you know, this thing came to life long before the pandemic hit, but he's really, he's ready to break ground as soon as students are thawed in spring. Hopefully, I have to do this.
Cause it was ninety-four, right? For a moment, one was ninety.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, we were, I have struggled to determine how best to look at it. Do we look at average? Do we need, do we need dollar drive away? And then I, you know, we, the previous council, we asked them, we don't really have a job, so we're in a good financial spot. So if we're, you know, if we are able to provide him a benefit that, you know, really gives us a bigger entering bang, then I think we're in a position that we can do that. Not all communities could if they were starving for tax dollars. That's not necessarily our case right now. So I think that allows the community, allows us to, to incentivize it. His, he put up a smaller building in Manchester. I think I had showed you, you know, they gave him, this is not as much as Manchester gave them. That was important to me that this deal isn't quite as sweet as that one. But, or you know, I mean, and it's not specific to that, any other community. I, I worked hard to try to find the sweetest spot for both of us. And this, this is what, this is not what he wanted, but this is.
So turn around the last one, ninety for four or ninety for three?
Yeah, I think it was ninety-three and seventy-five for. Yeah, I mean, really, the, the ten-year average, we looked at last time, the seven years, seventy-five, this is like an eighty-two. So it's, it's five, seven percent more over the course of the ten years.
I look, I look at this as, as a win-win for everybody. I mean, this is a great project for us. I think I've used great projects, right location with the right developer. I mean, this is, this is a developer that hopefully we can get some long-term relationship with. And I think, I think it's, I think it's a win-win for everybody.
And I feel it's a big benefit to the community.
Yeah, I mean, those, those economic well, stats, I mean, the, the tax dollars and the utilities, I mean, those are pretty basic. But even the, the tax, that doesn't assume, you know, I can't assume his project appreciated, which will definitely happen. So those are certainly on the low end. The figure, the statistic I found provides states of, you know, college kids spend eleven, eleven hundred and sixty dollars per month. That includes rent. I consider that to be very good.
I can tell you that for having a kid in college for two years, two weeks.
Yeah.
That's low.
So that just, that's twenty-five million dollar number. I mean, I feel like that sounds kind of ridiculous, but that's not. If anything, that's low. So those are dollars that we are gonna work hard, you know, they have, they have a bowling alley, they have an outlet for entertainment. They have, you know, a grocery store. I, I think we're gonna be able to capture most of those dollars, you know. So that's, that's not applying the sky number. Those are, those are dollars that are not currently being spent here, that are, that are gonna be spent here.
I think it's also worth keeping in mind that this is further deepening the infrastructure, the installed capacity, installed capital at NICC. And the relationship between the city and NIC has been nothing but great for, for decades. There is a great symbiotic relationship there. So the more installed capacity we have on that campus, the more there's going to be continued investment in that campus in other ways, both fiscal plan and programs, some of which will likely involve the city even more. So there's, there's good reason to be aggressive about making sure we land this in the right way to make this happen.
So in this, I wanted to get the informal feedback. This requires a public hearing and approval, so this isn't, this isn't like the word I've got here, but I just wanted to have my special feedback before we send it, send it off to the attorneys, which should take a ton of time to be researched, but in this is very standard. So I also did find out there's some information that I thought was valid. So if the council would choose them, once our comp plan, parks and trails plan, that's all done, and we're looking at further, further utilization of, of abatement with other apartments, if, if you would determine that that is appropriate, we can adopt a separate urban revitalization area, but a different schedule.
So this is adjustments there.
This, this, yeah, or, or we can do the same schedule or we can expand it, but to, you know, this decision has time and facts for him, but we, this keeps all the options open.
This is project specific?
Yes, but it keeps all the options open for, you know, when the comp plan is done, we're looking at where and how we want to handle other residential housing. We still have full, I didn't know necessarily that would be the case. I had to give some clarification. There are, there are some things you have to do, but it is, it is possible to set up different areas with different schedules, so.
So the action to us tonight is to simply pass a motion directing Whitney to work with our bonding agency to develop this, this verbiage.
I'll make a motion for the administrator to approve the council to finalize the draft plan of urban.
One second.
Doug.
You do need this?
What'd you say?
Saying we do need a motion on this?
Yes.
Karen.
John.
Jerry.
Kathy.
The motion carries with five ayes. And that brings us to the closing citizen comment. Does anybody still in the audience have anything they would like to share with the council?
We do, thank you. I'm excited. I was gonna reach in, I mean, but I think it's fully appropriate. They say, maybe if you all want to override, you can, my house, I have company, or we can come and expand on the weekend.
No, I mean, I would like to thank you guys for being so engaged and very respectful. It's a good process and why politics work sometimes in some places. I'll be watching, maybe see what it cares. Yeah, it's, it's enjoyable. We, we do need to get signed or whatever you wanna do that. And I know they're actually anticipating some delays in signage, I guess the windstorm.
It's only a way to see the sign show.
It's like a backlog order of like, over eighty thousand in signage, because they all were snapping at. So, um, so yeah, so I would just ask you to maybe try to get out of that and share with your buddies, anybody who can get that, you know, what the restrictions are, or we'll get signage out as soon as we can, but there, I think more people need it worse than us right now. We're gonna have to save them on that.
Yep. I'll just echo what Whitney said. Thank you for the, the approach that you chose to take through this. You've been very patient. The wheels turn slow. But it's a learning experience for us too. We're all better for it. Look forward to seeing it work out well for everybody involved.
And I still, I can see that possibly like a map or something. I didn't be honest, so.
Turn this up on Facebook, on, on the pages, whatever, just get, get the word out to people to try to, to do it.
I, I just agree with you, if they send a letter to every council, it's just, we can't say it's fine on that.
All right, so we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
One second. Doug.
John.
Meeting adjourned.